Good evening. I'm Allen Joins, Mayor of Winston-Salem. It's my pleasure to call to order this June 5th meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council, and would ask the city clerk to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Larson.
Present.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Mundy.
Present.
Councilmember Cipio.
Present.
Mayor Protem Adams.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
And Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you very much. And would you join the city council with me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our Sergeant Orange tonight is Lieutenant John Morris. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us. So he's there someplace, I'm sure. We have two honorariums to begin the meeting. May we have item H1 first, please?
Item H1, proclamation recognizing the 2023 Southbound Model Railroaders Club 50 years anniversary. Whereas the Southbound Model Railroaders, Inc. was founded in Winston-Salem on the 10th of May, 1973, and whereas the Southbound Model Railroaders have actively sought to bring together enthusiasts from all walks of life to build a larger and more detailed layout than could be done as individuals, all while having fun and building lifelong friendships. And whereas 50 years later, the organization is healthy with 26 active members and houses the largest HO scale club model train layout in the Triad. And whereas for those 50 years, the Southbound Model Railroaders have actively provided a source of fun and entertainment to the train lovers of Winston-Salem, young and old, through open houses, train shows, and public displays such as the layout at Brenner's Children's Hospital. And whereas we congratulate the Southbound Model Railroaders on their successes in the artistry and engineering of scale modeling, thank them for being an exemplary part of the city and are pleased to join in celebrating their 50th anniversary. Now therefore, I J. Allen Joins, Mayor of the City of Winston-Salem. North Carolina do hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 10th, as the 50th anniversary celebration of Southbound Model Railroaders, Inc.
Thank you, Mr. Bennett Meyer, President of Southbound Railroaders, is here. And I hope you'll come to the podium.
Southbound Railroad is located probably in the southwest ward.
I've got connections.
You've got connections there? Okay. On behalf of the city council myself, we are proud of this 50-year anniversary. It's amazing what the work you do in there and I present this proclamation to you. And thank you for bringing this special to our seat.
Thank you. And if you don't have a warm spot in your heart for HO model railroading, I don't know what's wrong with you. But thank you. Keeping any organization going for this long, it's a huge undertaking. It says an awful lot about the character of the folks involved. I hate that Jack was not able to make it tonight, as he's been so involved in it. I fully expect to see him up here on the dais, the city of Winston-Salem, at some point. He's an incredible young man. Thank you, folks, for what you do. And if you want to say a few words?
Yes. So we at the Southbound Model Railroaders are very proud to be a part of Winston-Salem and are proud of this recognition. Our members have been active in the community for 50 years, and we plan to be for as many more as we can. So thank you again for the recognition, and thank you for the support.
You're here. Item H2, please.
Item H2, proclamation recognizing lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, plus LGBTQ+ Pride Month. Whereas the City of Winston-Salem observes the month of June as a time to celebrate our dynamic LGBTQ+ community, raise awareness of services, foster dialogue to promote a more diverse community. And whereas in recognition of the city's nondiscrimination ordinance passed by the city council on March 22nd, 2021, to expand the role of Winston-Salem's Human Relations Commission to support the rights of every citizen to experience equality and freedom of discrimination. And whereas as the City of Arts and Innovation, we accept and welcome people of diverse backgrounds who contribute to the civic, cultural, and economic successes of Winston-Salem. And whereas the City of Winston-Salem celebrates its diversity every year during the Pride Winston-Salem Festival and Parade, held in the downtown arts district on Trade Street. Attendees come from around the state to celebrate and be their true authentic selves within a safe space. Now therefore, I J. Allen Joins, Mayor of the City of Winston-Salem, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the month of June 2023 as Lesbian, Gay, Bisexual, Transgender, Queer, Plus, Pride Month in Winston-Salem, North Carolina, and encourage citizens to support the numerous LGBTQ+ events during Pride Month.
Thank you. Jerry Moran is here, President of Pride Winston-Salem. I'm going to ask also Councilman Mundy to join me in presenting this.
Warren, on behalf of the city council and the city, we're happy to present this proclamation as we recognize the Pride Awareness Month and look forward to the festivities and events that are coming up soon. So thank you for being here tonight.
Congratulations. As a member of this community, I remember a time when I was young, and I never thought we would get to the point that a city council meeting like me would be recognized and actually celebrated. We've come a long way, baby, and we have a long way to go. So thank you. Thank you for helping us get there.
Thank you. Not really prepared to say a lot, but there's been a lot going on the past couple of days. We appreciate everyone's support. We are in this together. We will work through this together. Kevin and I have been talking a lot the past couple of days. Like he just said, we've come a long way. I've been around Pride for 10 years. I've fought for marriage equality. I was part of the groups that used to go into the Register of Deeds trying to get a marriage license and be denied for that. So I've been around for a while. I'll be around for a while again. So we've got a little more work to do, but I know that the, I know that the city supports us and will get us served. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran.
Thank you.
So now we go to the regular agenda, which is comprised of two Unified Development Ordinance amendments. There's one item designating a National Register of Historic Places structure and three zoning cases. Many of these items are listed for its public hearings, and when these public hearings are called, participants in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing and the council will consider the item. If there is opposition to the zoning cases, proponents and opponents will each be given 15 minutes for presentation and three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing and the council will consider that item. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Of course, copies of our agendas, as well as videos of previous meetings, are always available online on the city's website, and just click on the "Watch Meetings Online" option. May we have item Z1, please?
Item Z1, Public Hearing on an Ordinance Amending Chapter 10 of the Unified Development Ordinances to Revise the Membership Structure of the Forsyth County Historic Resources Commission, forwarded without recommendation from Community Development Housing General Government Committee.
Before we do the public hearing, I'll ask Mr. Murphy if he would give us a brief synopsis of this proposed UDO change.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of council. This is UDO CC22, and it is a request to amend Chapter 10 of the Unified Development Ordinances to modify the structure of the HRC. In 2022, the City Manager's Office directed staff to explore revisions to the HRC membership structure to provide greater opportunities to diversify, for diversity on the commission and allow commission to better reflect communities it represents. The HRC is a 12-member board with five members appointed by the city, five members appointed by the county, and one member each appointed by the Village of Clemmons and the Town of Kernersville. Currently, the City of Winston-Salem appoints one at-large member and four categorical members. The categorical members are appointed based on their two seats categorically that are tied to residential locations, either in an HO or an HO district. And there are two that are professional qualifications. Two, those categories are archaeologists, landscape architect, arborist, planner or surveyor, and an architectural historian or historic preservationist. In looking, when we were asked to look at this and look at the changes, you know, the first thing that stood out to us was the fact that we have five, the city council has five appointees, four of which are categorical, even only one at large, which automatically reduces the pool of potential applicants. So we looked at, we looked at that as a possible solution and benchmarked ourselves versus the other communities that we compare ourselves to that have HRC programs. There were several that did have residential-based categories, but only one other entity, and that was Durham, had categorical-based appointments. So in looking at that, we kind of felt like we were on the right track as a potential way to gain additional diversity through getting rid of those categorical appointments. So the request is to change the archaeologist, landscape architect, arborist, planner, or surveyor seat and the architectural historian or historic preservation seat to two at-large seats. The categorical seats are rooted in the makeup of the 1948 Board of Architectural Review for the Old Salem Historic District, which was created at a time when the planning board did not have professional historic preservation staff. We do have that staff today. As a matter of fact, we have two of them. Both of them are here, and they are excellent. And so, you know, those categorical, that categorical expertise is obviously important on the board. We also have that with our staff here that can take the place of that if they do not have those qualifications. In summary, this change will bring the HRC into line with the membership structure of the commission in peer communities. The amendment will have no impact on current members, as those professional categorical seats will continue to be filled by the folks that are in them, but as they transition off in November of 2023 and June of 2026, those categorical seats would go away if this were adopted, or those appointees would go away as they transition off. The HRC recommended this change after discussion at their retreat. The proposed change was presented to the Community Development Housing and General Government Committee back in the fall. We actually, the fall of 2022, we took a presentation and a public hearing in which no one spoke at the planning board, and the planning board did recommend approval of the amendment. Again, this did go forward to the Community Development Housing and General Government Committee, where we had a couple of meetings, and like I said, it did come forward with no recommendation. And with that, staff is still recommending approval of the revisions as proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who would like to be heard on this proposed UDO text amendment changing the makeup of the Historic Resources Commission? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed, and it did come from your committee, Mayor Protem. So I would recognize you for motion if you're ready.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I move for the approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, UDO CC22.
Second. Motion and second. Councilmember Larson.
Thank you, Mayor. At the committee meeting, I raised some questions, which were thoroughly discussed about the qualifications to serve on this commission. This commission is made up of individuals who have to make judgment based on some economic factors. And one is that we have a compact, the city has a compact with private property owners to designate the property, and in turn, for architectural control of that property, they get a tax credit, 50%, up to 50% tax abatement. The decision on protect the property resides in a certificate of appropriateness process where it has to be reviewed by staff and eventually by this commission. If any changes that would compromise the authenticity of the property has to be approved by the, by the commission, and it's important then that they have the credentials and the qualification to make sound judgments regarding the protection of this resource, which the taxpayers are actually subsidizing. I've looked at this fairly carefully, since it was brought up a month or so ago, and realized that probably this is not going to be as detrimental as I thought it was going to be, because it does not eliminate the possibility of any of these professional positions being appointed. In fact, what it does is it opens up the possibility for additional positions, such as architectural conservators, building trades individuals, continuum history professors and faculty, for example, that can talk about Winston-Salem's history as a whole, and that which are currently not identified in the process of selecting individuals for this commission. So I've changed my position slightly, and I'm in favor of it with the idea that we can expand the tent a little bit and bring in some more talent. It's important that the staff have a backup of a strong commission of individuals who speak with authority and credibility for the decisions that they recommend and send forward for purposes of controlling individual people's property, which can be a very touchy thing, and it's important that staff be protected by a strong commission. I think we can still maintain that. I would vote in favor of this.
Thank you, Mr. Larson. Councilmember McIntosh.
I just had a quick question for staff about how often we have trouble filling vacancies on this board.
I would probably have to defer to the experts who are sitting behind me. I know that occasionally we do have, we have problem getting a quorum sometimes, but that's not necessarily a problem filling seats. The problem is that, you know, a lot of times we do have turnover in seats, where we, someone thinks that they're interested, they come in and realize it's really not for them. But I'll defer to Heather on that.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers. I would agree with what Chris said. We don't so much have a problem filling the seats, but sometimes people get put on the commission, and it's not what they think it's going to be. They think they're being put on the Historic Marker Commission, or they're going to be doing something else. And in fact, the majority of this work is design review, which you really have to have a passion for. So we see turnover in some of the seats. But, you know, hopefully by broadening the applicant pool, we're going to get people who are actually really interested in doing the design review part and stay with us for a longer period of time.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Heather. Mayor Protem.
Thank you. The City of Winston-Salem is changing, and the diversity of our city is changing. And again, it goes back to we can't continue to talk about diversity and being intentional and inclusiveness when we have two large majority-minority communities in this city. Even though the African-American communities were dismantled and torn down, luckily for some of us, we were here and we're living and we can remember. But we basically don't have much that we can go and protect or tell the Historic Commission to, you know, make sure you're looking out for that, which they do now in our own way. If we weren't protecting our history, African-American history, as far back as this commission was established, and now we have a very vibrant Latino-Hispanic community that represents over 17% population in this city, we now have an opportunity and a second chance to protect their history in this city, because they work every day. They are part of every fiber in our being in this community now. And I'd hope that we would think that their children and their legacies will have something to look at. And I know people complain about the culture and how they like bright colors. Well, African-Americans like bright colors. It comes from our culture in Africa. Latino-Hispanics like bright colors. Asian-Americans like bright colors. It's our responsibility to help people understand the cultures. And we have someone like Triad Arts to help us with that, to educate the community. I think it's important. I think this is a good move. Again, when we see how out of step we are with our peers on this, then maybe we need some other people who look slightly different than the board that's been there for decades, that can look at parts of our city and say, you know what? Let's see if we can do this over here, and working with our very professional and elite staff. I trust our staff, and they've been doing this a lot longer than anybody else in this room. So thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to say that.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. We do have a motion and second to approve this amendment to the Chapter 10 of UDO. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, it's already there. It's unanimous. Quick. Thank you very much. Item Z2.
Item Z2, Public Hearing on an Ordinance to Amend Miscellaneous Sections of the Unified Development Ordinances to Provide Minor Nonsubstantive Changes and Clarifications. Community Development Housing General Government Committee recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Murphy. Would you tell us the, I call it, housekeeping items here?
Good evening again. I'll try to be a little briefer with this one. This, these are non-substantive changes, what we used to refer to as just general housekeeping of the ordinance, and this is the first one of these that we have brought forward since UDO CC22, excuse me, since UDO Clear Code was adopted, which is hence the UDO CC. And so it basically amends Chapters 3, 4, 5, 9, and 11 for just miscellaneous changes. The revisions are related to unintentional omissions or inconsistencies that we find and/or results of changes made in previous amendments that we lost, et cetera. It includes two minor changes to the zoning map amendment process, one minor change to the establishment of Neighborhood Conservation Overlay District, correcting an omission in the Table of Permitted Uses, revising two other specific standards for two uses in Chapter 5, reserving and encoforming subsection in Chapter 9, and revising several definitions in Chapter 11. I'm not going to go through those specifically, but if you have questions, I can come back to them if there's anything that you want to discuss. This was, a public hearing was held by the planning board in April. There were no speakers in opposition. The vote was six to two. There were two planning board members who had two particular things that they did not like related to these changes, but for them, you know, it was recommended for approval, and it came forward to the Community Development Housing and General Government Committee at the May, at their May meeting, and the committee did recommend approval of the item. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Murphy? Thank you, Mr. Murphy. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who wishes to be heard on these potential changes to the Unified Development Ordinance? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed and recognize Mayor Protem. Did it come from your committee?
Yes. Mayor, members of the council, I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for approval of this item, and, two, UDO CC23.
Second. In discussion? None of all those in favors? Please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item Z3.
Item Z3, Public Hearing Regarding the Eligibility of the Cone Gray House for Listing in the National Register of Historic Places. Community Development Housing General Government recommends approval.
Thank you. Heather Bradland will give us a presentation on this proposed designation.
Following Chris's lead, I will try to be brief. Again, my name is Heather Bradland, and I'm here to present the Cone Gray House, which is being nominated to the National Register. As you all may recall, the City of Winston-Salem is a certified local government, which means we get the right to comment, or you get the right to comment about whether or not you believe a property meets the criteria for designation, which is why we're here tonight, looking at the Cone Gray House. This house is in Renolda Park. You designated it a local historic landmark in December of last year, so if it looks familiar, that's why. It's located on Arbor Road at the intersection with West Kent. You can see an aerial of the property here. There's a map showing the location again. National Register properties have to meet two criteria. They have to have significance, meaning they're important, and they have to have integrity, which essentially means that someone who was alive at the period when that property was built or was important would recognize it still as the same property today. This property is being nominated for significance under Criterion C, which is for architecture. It's a house designed by Charles Barton Keen, very grand, beautiful interiors, et cetera. And it does maintain the seven qualities of integrity, which are listed there on the slide for you. The SHIPO, the State Historic Preservation Office, requested comment from the commission and the city council in April. On May 3rd, the Historic Resources Commission unanimously recommended that this house be submitted for listing in the National Register. We also did meet our legal requirements that are laid out in our certification agreement as a certified local government, issuing a press release requesting comment and doing newspaper advertisements. You all will review this tonight and make your comment about whether or not you believe the property qualifies for listing, and then the state nominating committee will actually hear and vote on the nomination on Thursday, June 8th, and then it will get passed to the Park Service, which is where it actually will get entered into the register. That is it. Happy to answer questions.
Any questions of Heather? Thank you very much. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who wishes to be heard on this proposed eligibility of the Cone Gray House for listing on the National Register? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed. Again, Mayor Protem, this came, oh, came from your committee. I thought Mr. McIntosh was raising his finger, but it's his pen. Mayor Protem.
It's in my ward.
Okay.
I move that, I move, one, that the city council find the city property meets the criteria, the listing in the National Register of Historic Places, and, two, for approval of Z3.
Second. It's your second. Second. Thank you. Any discussion? None of all those in favor? Please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you very much. Item Z4.
Item Z4, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of the Liberty Group LLC, W3572, from LI to PBL. Property is located on the west side of Oak Street between West 8th Street and West 10th Street, located in the north ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed and recognize Mayor Protem Adams. This is your ward.
I'm a rock star tonight.
You're getting paid extra time.
I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for the approval of this item, and, two, W3572.
Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion? None of all those in favor? Please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, councilmember, Mayor Protem. Item Z5.
Item Z5, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of Daniel Calhoun and Olivia Calhoun, W3573, from RS7 to RSQ. Property is located at the south side of Crestwood Drive between Hutton Street and Granville Drive, located in the south ward. Planning board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. Again, is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? I know the petitioner, Mr. Simmons, is here for any questions. Seeing no opposition, I declare the public hearing closed and recognize Councilmember Larson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is a site that actually had a fire some years back, and is a vacant lot right now, and it's appropriate that something get put back on it as soon as possible. Therefore, I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for the approval of this item, and, two, of W3573.
Second. Motion and second. Any further discussion or questions? None of all those in favor? Please indicate by voting yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Larson. Item Z6.
Item Z6, Public Hearing on Zoning Petition of Taylor Development Group LLC, W3580, from RM18, RM8, and RS9 to RS7. Property is located on the east side of North Clifdale Drive between Country Club Road and Guinevere Lane, located in the west ward, and planning board recommends approval of petition.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who is opposed to this rezoning? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public Seeing no one, I declare the public hearing closed and recognize Councilmember Clark.
I'll make a motion if it's a second. I would like to make a few comments. I move for approval of, one, the statement of consistency for the approval of this item, and, two, W3580.
Second. Motion, second. Go ahead, Councilmember Clark.
Yeah, just want to comment very quickly, and I thank the developer and the builder for being here tonight. I think this is an excellent example of a nice infill land that's been vacant for many, many years, kind of in the heart of the west ward, and we're going to put 20 homes on it, something like that.
Fifteen.
Fifteen, okay. I was close. A nice infill that we don't get very often in the older parts of town, but I'm glad you're doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or discussions? If not, all those in favor, please vote yes. Anyone opposed, vote no. And that's unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Clark. That's all the items we have on our agenda, so we do need to go into a closed session. And Mayor Potem, I believe you've got that motion.
Yes. I move that the City Council go into closed session pursuant to, one, NCGS 14331811A3 to provide instructions, two, and receive advice from the city attorney regarding several legal matters and to preserve the attorney-client privilege, and, two, NCGS 14331811A5 to approve amendments from several closed sessions held pursuant to said statute, as well as NCGS
Second. Motion, second, to go into closed session. All those in favor of the motion, please indicate by saying aye. Anyone opposed, we go into closed session. Ladies and gentlemen, if you'll excuse us, we're going to stay here in this room for our closed session.
Police Department, promotional ceremony and then on Friday morning, fire recruit class 32 graduation ceremony at 10 a.m. So, you know, as public safety, member of the public safety department, I'm just trying to generate some audience for these folks that do such good work for us.
Thank you, Councilman Mendick. All right, I entertain a motion to adjourn.
We'll move.
Motion second to adjourn. All those in favor of adjourned, please say aye.
Aye.
If you want to pose no, we are adjourned.